Good evening. Thank all of you for being here tonight. Today is August first, two thousand and twenty-three. Our thought for today is gratitude is their hearts and memory. That's a French proverb. We'll go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. Uh, we have a special guest with us tonight, Pastor Evans from Saint Paul Church. Sir, if you would, please come on up. Thank you for being here tonight. Uh, Pastor Evans is new to the community. I think he's been here a couple of months. And man, he is tall. Wow. Thank you, sir, for being here. Um, let me just say first, welcome to this community. We are blessed to have you here. Um, and we look forward to your leadership. If you would, uh, tell us a little bit about yourself and pray for our community and lead us in our pledge tonight.
All right, well, good evening to you all, to Commissioner Vane's, uh, our commissioner, Commissioner Mason, uh, to you all, our county commissioner Cooper as well. We thank you so very much, County Manager Cooper. We thank you so very much for this opportunity, uh, to come and share with you on this evening. Uh, I'm Terrance Evans. I am the proud pastor of Saint Paul, AM Church Covington at one thirty-one oh eight Brownsbridge Road. I've been, been there for a whopping two months. And it has been eventful. Uh, I, I am thankful for the wonderful ministries that we have. And two of them I would like for us to, uh, pay special attention to, and that is our wonderful social action committee, uh, who has worked tirelessly to help us to bridge gaps within the community. And we will be serving as a polling precinct, uh, in coming up elections at the church, as well as our food pantry ministry, which we have, and food distributions, which happens on the first, and I'm sorry, the second and fourth Thursdays of the month at ten A.M. to two P.M. So please encourage persons to come out and share on those evenings. Let us pray. Merciful and almighty and powerful God, we thank you, oh God, for this time, for this moment, for this space called now. God, we know that we can do nothing without you. So God, we come before you, oh God, with reverence, with thanksgiving, and with honor, asking God that you would please lead, guide, and direct all that is done and said in this meeting tonight and in meetings to come. God, we ask for your covering over each member of this body, for persons in this community that come to utilize their voices to make things better. We ask right now in your son, Jesus Christ, name, God, that all be aligned according to your will. God, we ask for unity. We ask for peace. We ask for direction. We know, God, that all these things can happen because, God, you've done them many times before. We ask, God, that you please do it again. So please, God, have thine own way. Let your glory fall in this place. Let the abundance of who it is show up in each and every person today. The commission, the citizens, those who are watching. Let us all know that you reign. And as we look to you, God, we know that you will abide with us and order all of our steps. We give you praise and we give you honor for all that will happen tonight, the fruit that will come out of what is going to be placed before us all. And we believe by faith, God, that you shall get glory out of all of it, and we shall get some good as well. We thank you and we honor you. We ask this prayer in the precious and powerful name of Jesus, who is the Christ, and we say together, amen.
Amen.
As please as we go and we say the pledge of allegiance together.
Amen.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Don't take it.
You start it off?
You go ahead, son.
Okay.
I would pray.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to a free and equal world, which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Thank you so much.
Pastor, um, thank you so much. Um, we have a token of appreciation that we want to give to you tonight for being here.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you and your welcoming. We look forward to it.
Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda is the agenda adoption. I seek a motion that we approve the agenda, please.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would like to, uh, make a motion to add to the agenda discussion of the senior home repair. And the reason being is because we have some inconsistencies. It's just for discussion purposes only, and I would like to add that as an agenda item.
Um, I think the county manager is looking to.
Not a report.
Address.
It wasn't in the county manager's report, so that's one reason why I wanted to add it to the agenda.
Okay. Um, I let the board to vote on it. Um, you want to make that an emotion?
Yes, I did. I said I'd like to move to add the, or to the agenda discussion of the senior services repair. Senior, I'm sorry, senior home repair for discussion purposes only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sanders is asking that we amend agenda, uh, to discuss senior home repair. Um, it's been seconded by Commissioner, um, Henderson in a discussion. Uh, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So that is part of your report tonight, uh, Ms. Cooper to.
It's not a part of my report, but I am aware. Thank you, uh, Commissioner Sanders, for your email earlier today. And I was going to speak to that in my closing remarks in reference to my plan of action.
All in favor? It passes five oh. Want to amend the agenda, make that item number seventeen eight? Thank you, senior. Home improvement. With it, I seek a motion that we, um, approve agenda as stand.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as stand.
Second. This is a motion by Commissioner Sanders and second by Commissioner Mason in the discussion. All in favor? Passes five oh, thank you. Uh, next is citizen comments. Just an opportunity that we allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics only, agenda topics only. You have, um, three minutes to do so. If you would, please come on up and state your name, your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only.
Good afternoon. My name is Renee Caviarne. I live in Settlers Grove, and I'm part of the senior home repair. And it's just been so much confusion about the system and the way it's operating. Because I, I look at it where as we have a lot of seniors that's not equipped with, um, the internet phone service. And this is where they say we will have to do it. But when we come in, there's, you know, four people, three people to help. But yet and still, when they, um, tell us different things like, okay, come back tomorrow. Those that's not, um, that don't have an application in, they're the only ones going to be seen. But we've been set there two, three, four hours. So it's, it's like the system is not really put into place where it's organized enough. And then as far as the program is concerned, they come up with, uh, the different amounts, fifteen to thirty. And then when you submit it, then you'll be rejected. Not myself, but there's others that I've talked to while we're sitting there and talking. And I just feel like that the program, if it's for the seniors, if it's for Newton County, there should be more, um, understanding to what our needs are. And it don't seem like it. Or it's just, just messed up. It's just mixed up. One telling you one thing, one telling you something else. And it's confusing to a lot of seniors, and those are the ones that really, really need the help. And because I know of several seniors that the stuff, the thing, the things that they have on the list, it was qualify you one more moment, but once you get your application in, then all of a sudden it's not qualifying. Then, uh, whenever you, uh, have a application in, it get lost in the cloud. Uh, I don't know whose fault that is. I'm not blaming nobody, but somebody need to have regulated that ahead of time so that we wouldn't run into that problem. Because once we put an application in, we're thinking that we're done. We put in all our information and everything, and then all of a sudden it's not done. It's, it's missing. Something need to be done about that. Somebody need to address that so that we will be, um, readiness to know whether our application have been accepted or if we got a case manager, who is it for the case managers to be able to get back with us to let us know if there's anything else that we need. And I just think that it needs to be really addressed and looked at a little bit closer so that we will be able to handle what we need to do as citizens. And, oh, it's a whole lot of other stuff, but I know other people got to talk, so, um, I'm going to give someone else a chance. But please look into this. And this happens every time we have a program to the county, every time. And there's other counties, it just runs so smooth. And I don't understand what's going on or who need to be addressing the things that we have problems with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Archer Shepherd, down one six nine Village Drive, couple of Georgia. I just wanted, uh, the last meeting, I was up here, and I asked, uh, the commissioners consider extending the, uh, the time because the time expired yesterday at, uh, three, three o'clock. Uh, uh, yesterday I reached out to, uh, Commissioner Edward and, uh, County Manager. I didn't get no response. We had a meeting today with these citizens, and it was so many people that it was had all these issues about this, uh, how this thing is set up. Some of them didn't get a chance, opportunity to, uh, get an application in. So tonight I'm asking you all to extend this thing for the least of the people. I mean, the very least of the people that wanted not able to get any help. So I'm appealing to you all tonight. Please extend it for these citizens to have an opportunity to get some help. Thank you very much.
This is Ms. Annie White. Um, she has hearing aids, so she can't hear that well, so I'm going to speak for her. And her address is thirty-two oh five North Circle, Covington, Georgia. Um, Ms. Annie White came to the meeting on today, and she stated that she had just went over to, um, the, um, admin building to check on her application because it was closed off on yesterday. And so upon her going today, she came in in a rage crying saying that they told her that they disqualified her because something about she didn't send the documents in, but they never told her that she have a third of day limit to send the documents in. But me, I'm going to tell y'all my experience, what I experienced, and which I have taught to several other commissioners on the board. I went there last Monday, and when I went to the admin building over there last Monday, you don't have to cry. And so when I went to the admin building on last Monday, what I observed was, it was an email that came out to the se, the seniors. I think it came out around about five o'clock that mo, morning, Monday morning. So it was a line out there because they were going in trying to get the assistance that they need to upload because they said they had to have pictures. So upon getting there, um, the staff was not aware of that they had to have pictures because they saying that they weren't equipped to uploading the pictures. If they had their own device, they could, um, upload the, um, pictures with their own device. But the county didn't have it where their devices could upload the photos. So it was several people there that came to see about, you know, upload the photos, but they found out that it was a glitch in the system, and they had to delete all their information. So they had to stay there approximately two hours to do the process all over again because they said it was a glitch in the system. So it was one lady there, I don't know her first name, her last name was Dobbs. Her husband was in the hospital, and his email was attached to, um, their, um, application. Well, he was in the hospital to see it, and she just wanted to come back and change his email to her email so she could move forward on the process. Well, they told Ms. Dobbs that she had to do the process all over again. She couldn't just change the email. She had to do the process all over again. And it was two, it was, it was four women there, but it was two elderly women said. Well, all four of them said they had been calling the county manager and had not got a response back. And two other ladies said that they came up here, and the county manager vehicle was out there in the parking lot, but they said he wasn't here. And they said they stood out there for about an hour on that bench back there in the back, and they was waiting to see was he going to come up or was he going to return. And they said that the county manager came out the back door and got in the vehicle and left. So I'm just telling y'all what I experienced when I went up there with elderly people to help him.
Anyone else?
Joseph Reed, I live at, uh, one oh one oh nine Village Drive. And, uh, you know, my, you know, I helped my mom, you know, get the, uh, the grant. She did get approved, and eventually we did get the air conditioner out there. But he was having problems, uh, getting the money from the county to get started. Uh, he was, he shared me about how hard it was for him to, you know, to get the check so he could start work. He did do it Saturday, but, uh, you know, and the other problem, uh, is, you know, when contractors coming out, you know, some of them don't come back, you know? And, uh, it's just a lot of things with the contractors that, uh, you know, I don't really get, you know, uh, how they set up for is, do they have to have a contractor's license or a business license? Or what are the requirements for the people that come out to give the estimates? Because, you know, if the contractors, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's just certain people that you can, uh, get to come out. And the ones, I know a couple of them, I came out that I know, you know, from around here that, you know, I know I do work with them. And they came out, and some of them never came back. A lot of them never called back, and a lot of them never came back. And, uh, and a lot of them were giving shabby estimates, you know? So it, and you know, it's a lot, uh, even once, you know, you get it, get the grant. That's complicated and trying to deal with it. You know, my mom, almost eighty years old, and it's been frustrating to me to some degree. But we did get the air conditioner in, you know? And he did a good job, you know? But he, he kind of mentioned how hard it was, you know, like, it's like a lot of people, the contractors don't even want to deal with this. You know what I mean? It's like a problem to them. It's like, you know, they going through, they don't have time because everybody's, everybody's kind of in a uptight right now trying to survive. You know what I mean? So, you know, it's like, don't nobody really need no extra activity, you know? It's just kind of like we need to get it simple so we can deal, you know, get the elderly people's houses fixed and, and get the problem resolved, you know? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Alex Togo, thirty-one nineteen Sanford Street, Covington, Georgia. And, uh, I'm just here thanking God that I met the age group to, uh, be able to even be considered for a grant. But I'm here to talk about the elderly. But see, I didn't find out but like two weeks ago, so I had to do a lot of ripping running. My grandfather bought a property probably seventy-three years ago, so it needs some work done. And I thank you all for the program. But like they said, getting the contractors out, some won't, uh, uh, sesame feeds. And it's so hard trying to get everybody in place. But I want to say that for the elders, a lots have paid taxes, have been here all their lives. And this is very detrimental because we need help, and the help that we need is going to come from you all. So I see a lot of hu, humans, but we need more humanity. You know, we need more humanity because it's rough on all of us. But I think if we had it probably more self, probably, oh, I don't know what kind of way we could have did it or still can do it. But we need your help. I'm not coming begging, but I'm coming, standing in the gap for my grandfather. My mother worked hard to keep it. And I, I, I just want what's right for Newton County. You know, if we're going to be one, let's do it together, and let's try to do it right, you know? And, and, and let's help these elderly, elderly people because a lot of them, like they said, not, uh, computers were, they, they, they don't have too many people to help them. So let's pitch in together and make Newton County as one because this is a great place. I've been here fifty-six years. That's all my life. This is all I know, and this is all they know. And like I said, s, some of these elders probably help some of the commissioners. You never know. It could be our mothers, grandmothers, grandfathers, could be us. We don't, we don't know, you know? But let's get together and let's do this probably a little better just to help the elderly. If I don't get it, and I believe I will, but let's help the others. You know, it's, it's not even about me. It's not about me, but it's about of all of us. Let's come together like a county shooter, brothers and sisters. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, sir. We're going to go into the, um, I'm going to skip my report. We're going to the county manager report. Ms. Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So today's report, uh, August first, two thousand and twenty-three, we're going to talk about, of course, the three P initiative, and we're going to talk about the people. And in particular, our people, our staff, uh, and the work that they do from an infrastructure standpoint. As you all know, Newton County is comprised of seventeen departments, maybe sixteen departments and one workforce unit. And the true unsung heroes are the people that come here every day and do the work that they need to do. Uh, we have approximately seven hundred and forty-three full-time and part-time staff, so we're a boutique outfit that does big and bold things in spite of our numbers being so small. I want to talk about development services since we're going to talk about infrastructure. Here's a three-month snapshot of the building permits issued, the new business license issued, the renewed business license issued, the zoning applications, and the development applications. As you could see, for May, June, and July, uh, we had a hundred and fifty-five permits issued in May, a hundred and twenty-three in June, and eighty-six in July. On average, that is about a hundred and twenty-one or so. And when you look at the associated revenue collected, you have over two hundred and seventeen thousand in May, a hundred and ninety-two thousand in June, and a hundred and twenty-one thousand in July. So on average, that's about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand of associated revenue collected with the building permits. When you go down to the new business license issue, you have thirty-six issued in May, twenty-six in June, twenty-five in July. So on average, that's about twenty-nine issued a month. When you look at the renewed business license issue, you have twenty-two in May, fourteen in June, and three, excuse me, in July. So that's about thirteen issued renewed business license. When you look at the revenue collected, ten thousand in May, just under seventy-four hundred in June, just under eight thousand in July. When you look at that average, that's eight thousand four hundred and ninety-nine, uh, dollars in terms of associated revenue collected. Zoning applications in the month of May, sixteen, June, nineteen, July, sixteen. And on average, that's seventeen applications. When you look at the associated revenue collected, just under nine thousand in May, just under eighty-eight hundred in June, and just under fifty-six hundred in July. So on average there, we're looking at just under twelve thousand or so. Uh, when you look at the development applications, you have four in May, seven in June, and eight in July, with the associated revenue collected over ten thousand in May, just under forty-two hundred in June, and just under twenty-two thousand in July. When you look at the total revenue for the month of May, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and twelve thousand in June, and a hundred and fifty-eight thousand in July. So on average, that's two hundred and six thousand dollars in revenue. We're always looking to improve. That's why we have the three P approach, people, purpose, and processes. We're looking at our processes and development services. Uh, we're going to continue to develop and improve staff with professional development and training in their specific areas of, uh, work. We want to also look at improving our online, uh, forum, submittal. We want to also look at improving our online, uh, form, submittal process for permits and applications. And we're going to also continue to update the Newton County Unified Development Ordinance as well as the Impact Fee Ordinance. Let's turn the fleet and let's look at shop hours. When you look at the serviceable hours for the months of April, May and June, in April you have three hundred and seventy hours and May you have three hundred and fifty-seven hours and June you have five hundred and seventy-nine hours. On average, that's about four hundred and thirty-five serviceable hours that staff puts in in relationship to the work that they do. When you look at the number of vehicles serviced, uh, vehicles and equipment, I might add. In April, there were a hundred and fifty-six repairs, in May, a hundred and eighty-nine repairs, in June, two hundred and forty-five repairs. So on average, that's about a hundred and ninety-six, uh, vehicles that, that have been serviced. So when we look at our fleet unit as a whole, shop maintains over five hundred vehicles and pieces of equipment ranging from our law enforcement vehicles to fire apparatus to law and more equipment. Public works, we're going to look at the work assignments by district, we're going to look at May and June in particular. District one, there was a hundred and eighty work assignments. Uh, in May and June, there was a hundred and sixty-eight, uh, work assignments. And on average, that's about a hundred and seventy-four in District one. District two, there was eighty-nine work assignments in May and sixty-seven in June. So on average, that's about seventy-eight. District three, there's a hundred and one work assignments in May and about eighty-eight in June. So on average, that's about ninety-four point five. District four, we had ninety-six work assignments in May, we have a hundred in June. So on average, that's ninety-eight. And District five, we had a hundred and thirty-seven work assignments in May and eighty-seven in June. And on average, that is a hundred and twelve. When you look at the total bags of litter, just under three thousand bags of litter, and about seventeen point one tons of debris have been transported to the Newton County landfill in June alone. Public Works accomplishments. The projects that they've completed, the Brittany Lane resurfacing they're doing, the Autumn Ridge subdivision resurfacing, the Cove subdivision resurfacing, impact projects, the paving of Picket Bridge Road between Highway thirty-six and Highway two-twelve, splice update, Crowell Road, removal of the previous road at Har- Harold Dobbs Roads, those are some of the accomplishments. When we transition to solid waste, uh, and we look at hang tags, uh, the numbers in May, June and July, five thousand five hundred and fifty, five thousand five hundred and eighty-three in May, one thousand five hundred and thirty in June, four thousand five hundred and eighty in July. So on average, that's like three thousand eight hundred and eighty and ninety-seven new tags. When you look at the number of replacement tags.
Ms. Cooper, let me jump in, um, and we're going to come back to the county manager, the county manager's report. Uh, but it's seven-thirty and we're going to move into our zoning tonight.
Okay.
Um, Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please come on up, please ma'am. We'll get back to the county manager's report as soon as zoning is over. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Our first, uh, petition. Our first petition this evening is a rezoning case, it's R E Z twenty-two dash zero 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 one one. This is located at sixty-five eighty Highway two-twelve with approximately two hundred and eighty-one feet of road frontage. We are rezoning two point one acres of the entire thirty-four point four-one acre parcel. Tax ID number is zero 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 eight zero zero two J. The existing land use map is commercial, the existing zoning is A R. Proposed zoning. The proposed zoning for the two point one zero acres is neighborhood commercial. Carta area is emerging suburbs in the South River watershed and in Commission District two. And our owner and petitioner today is Michael Allen, Jr. And the applicant's intent is to locate A Jen's grooming lodge and establish all their neighborhood retail services in the building. And this is history, the planning commission approved the flume amendment, that is a future land use map amendment to commercial in February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, and the board approved the same flume for commercial on March twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. And last month, on July twenty-fifth, the planning commission recommended approval of the rezoning from A R to neighborhood commercial. And again, the subject site that they're looking to rezone is just the two point one zero acres and the entire parcel is currently undeveloped. So the site plan that the department received on May thirtieth, um, gave the following information. The applicant is proposing to locate a two-story commercial building there to locate neighborhood services for the surrounding community. And the building is approximately just under five thousand square feet and will include a gentleman's lounge in one of the suites. There are about eighteen parking spaces and there's preliminary approval already from GDOT for the entrance which will be off of Highway two-twelve. And the proposed commercial use is consistent with policies and intent of the emerging suburban carta area and with approved zonings in the area. And given the land use and zoning designations of the surrounding properties, there is justification for approval of the proposed commercial zoning. And recommended conditions, should the petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved, neighborhood commercial. Conditional is subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. And one, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. A, provide satisfactory ingress and egress as approved by the Georgia Department of Transportation. Improvements may include, but are not limited to, a left-turn lane, deceleration lane and acceleration lane and/or access to the adjoining property. B, the exterior of any building shall have a water table of bricks, tucko or other approved material. And C, submit appropriate plans or plots including stormwater plan to be reviewed and approved by the Development Services Department, Public Works, Newton County Fire Services, the Newton County Water Authority, the GSWCC as well, and GDOT. This is an aerial view of the parcel, they're just, um, seeking a rezoning of this two point one zero acres here with a star on it. Current zoning is agricultural residential. This is the flume, it's already, um, been amended to commercial and we have some flume at the junction up here which is also commercial. It's in the South River watershed. Commissioner, District two. This is a proposed survey that our decided plan that was submitted to the applicant, so we have the building here, this is the two acres in front. And they're showing their parking and detention area and everything. And this is just a preliminary, um, site plan. This is the proposed building as submitted by the applicant, a concept. And this is just closer up, so it's going to have like a brick or stucco water table along the front, just in keeping with the county's requirements. And this is the rear elevation. These are just pictures pulled from the site, the applicant currently does run his busi- he already runs a business out of Porter Dale and he is looking to relocate at this new property. And just a few pictures from there. And I do believe, uh, Mr. Allen is present, Chairman, it's a public hearing.
Thank you. We're going to open it up now for our public hearing tonight. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight, um, you may come at this time, you have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please state your name and your address for the record, please. The applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners.
My name is Michael Maurice Allen, Jr., uh, to address, seventy Patterson Way, Covington, Georgia. Um, I'd just like to touch on a few points. As far as the benefits for approving this, uh, request, um, the county will get in fact the, uh, taxes from the, from the building. Not only that, the admin fees for the b- uh, business license for the multiple, uh, retail stores that would be within this building. I also like to point out that there will be no adverse effects on the natural resources or the environment or even the Newton County citizens for approving this. Uh, it will not be burdensome for the schools or the public, uh, utilities, that includes the water and sewer. And as far as the usability, uh, there are no adverse effects on the usability for, uh, the neighboring properties and/or my, my neighbors. So as, uh, being a barber for the past seven years has allowed me to touch many, many lives, the hundreds of lives. Uh, some people, they just want somebody to talk to, some, some people, they just want to listen. Those of you that have had barbers or hairstylists can attest that when you come into your barber, you're in a relaxed atmosphere. Uh, you probably spill your guts to him or her, you know? But all that stays in-house and at the end of the day, you feel relieved. And also you look good as well. I like to continue those services in which the neighborhood in which I reside, on sixty-five eighty Highway two-twelve. So it is said that the, the barber shop is a cornerstone of the community. The barber shop as well as the barbers. I, and I would like for that cornerstone to be at sixty-five eighty Highway two-twelve. As you all can see from, from the pictures and also if you were to look on Google and Facebook, uh, as far as the resume, uh, the, the reviews, this is not, uh, your average barber shop. You know, there, there's nobody hanging out, uh, after hours causing trouble, uh, you don't have to worry about any excess crime. I service everyone from the two-year-old kid for his first haircut to the elderly man, uh, from his last haircut. That's basically all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Guys, I want to ask you if you would, take a moment to, uh, take a brief moment to silence your phones. Uh, if you don't know how, we'll get you one of the deputies to help, help you do that. Yeah. No, no, you're fine, you're fine, it's still open. We're going to get this to stop going, um, deputies, can you help me with this? Because young ladies deserve the right to make comments, um, without being interrupted. So guys, if you can help me find out whose phone that is that keep dinging. Sir, can you turn it off for me, please? Okay, thank you, sir. Ma'am, you can go ahead.
Hello, I'm Chairman Baines and, uh, the rest of the board. Um, I'm Mrs. Allen and I just want to point out that he has started a youth in the community doing several events. He sponsored a, a family of seven, um, that were going through something at the time. He took the young gentleman in, this is the more upscale barber shop. Um, you would have youth coming in with their problems and he was able to, to solve them. Not only that, he takes pride and joy in what he do for, for not just the, the, the community, but everyone that's around him. So I know for a fact that it'd be a true blessing to Newton County if you all would approve this. He, like I said, he has done so much and there's so many events that he had participated in. So i- i- if you go and look at the reviews and look at the Google reviews, everything that he has, that he does, everything that he puts his, puts his hand on is a true blessing. So again, if you all would approve this, you, you would not go wrong with this gentleman. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. What's your name again?
My name is Mrs. Allen.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time, you, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Ms. Shayna. That portion of our public hearing is closed. I think this is in District two, if I'm not mistaken, uh, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, before I actually make my motion, I want to, um, concur with what was stated. Um, I have had an opportunity to meet and have conversations with Mr. Allen. Uh, gone to the shop in Porter Dale, it is an amazing environment. Um, very, very, makes everybody feel very, very comfortable. Uh, they even get refreshments and all that good stuff, um, really top-notch service. Uh, I believe that this area off of two-twelve is prime and ready, uh, for economic development. So I think this will be an amazing project, uh, to really begin to see this area begin to flourish uh, and become all that it will be in the future. And so with that said, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, case number R E Z two-two dash zero 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 one one.
Thank you, sir, is that second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Sanders. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh, thank you. Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you, Chairman. Our next petition this evening is also a rezoning case. It is R E Z twenty-three dash zero 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 one two. It's located at forty-five forty-eight Salem Road with approximately two hundred and eighty-two feet of road frontage. It is on, uh, point seven seven acres. Tax ID number is zero zero one four zero two six. The existing land use map currently is a development node. The existing zoning is R two, single-family residential, but it's in the Salem overlay tier two. The proposed zoning is general commercial, it's in the Yellow River watershed, this is also in District two. And the current owner, owners are Claudia and Martin Williams, and they're also the petitioners. So applicant's intent is to rezone the parcel within the Salem overlay. And there's currently an existing day spa there and they're looking to rezone it to commercial. And back in twenty eighteen, in December fourth of twenty eighteen, the board approved a conditional use permit for the spa to locate there. And that was, uh, C U P eighteen dash zero 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 three. And in July twenty-fifth, this is last month, the planning commission recommended approval of the rezoning to C G, general commercial. And then the current zoning is R three residential, however, because it's in the Salem overlay tier three, it isn't allowed use of the conditional use permit. So that's how they were able to locate there back in twenty eighteen. Again, this is just more information on the site, has the zoning R two, um, Salem overlay and what is currently there. So the site plan that was submitted to the department in June of this year, it shows basically the medical day spa that is already currently there and existing. And in conclusion, the proposed commercial use is consistent with the policies and intent of the Salem overlay and with approved zonings in the area. And given the land use and zoning designations of the surrounding properties and meeting, and meeting the intent of section four six zero zero two zero of the Salem overlay, there is justification for approval. And recommended conditions, should the petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved, general commercial. Conditional is subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. And where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. And one, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. A, comply with the requirements of the Salem overlay. B, all activities of the day spa shall be carried on entirely within the enclosed building. And C, submit appropriate plans or plots or permits as required to Development Services, Public Works, Newton County Fire Services, the Water Authority, the GSWCC for any future development improvements. This is current, this is the current aerial of the building. Current zonings are two, single-family residential. The flume or the future land use map is a development. The flume or the future land use map is a development node. On the Yellow River watershed, Commissioner, District Two. And this is a survey that was submitted. And of course, this is the current photograph of the building. And these are just photos that were taken from online of what it looks like inside and out when they were opening. So this is a conceptual site plan. When they, when they submitted the original plans back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, they already showed the expansion that they were planning, which would be like the phase two of it. So this is, we're moving towards that phase now. So this is a conceptual plan, so it would be in this little area here. Right now, they only have what was the existing house that was converted. And if there are any questions? If not, this is the public hearing, Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. It's time, we're going to open it up for the applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight. You have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please come and state your name for the address. Please come and state your name and the address for the record, please. Those who would like to speak in favor tonight.
Hi, my name is Claudia Williams, and I'm the owner, and my husband is here as well of the property that was just spoken of.
You have anything you want to say to the board about?
Not really, unless you have questions.
Well, listen, thank you, thank you for being here. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. Please state your name and address for the record, please. Would anyone like to oppose tonight? Would anyone like to oppose tonight? Would anyone like to oppose tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. Ms. Applewhite, please. I think this is also in District Two. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I make my motion, Mrs. Williams was being very modest. And so I will speak on her behalf. I had an opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting of this amazing facility. It is not only elegant and beautiful, as you can even see from the outside, the inside, but the services that this spa provides to the community is just phenomenal. I think this is definitely something that was needed for this area of the community. I'm personally glad that they are there. I think from the feedback I've received from residents that attend this spa, I only heard great things, and so I think the expansion of this particular spa, I think Mr. and Mrs. Williams is going to take it to a whole nother level. And they're going to truly, truly be an amazing, amazing business in this part of our community and in District Two. And so with that being said, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case number REZ two-three dash zero 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 one two.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second? Thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders?
This is more of an educational moment for me, but I concur with Commissioner Mason. I was also at the ribbon cutting. It's a beautiful location. I just want to ask for Patrick, maybe you can answer it, or maybe Shayna can answer this question, because I did have some residents saying this is an awesome place, but would the changing of the zoning force any other businesses not like the spa? Because they love the spa to come in if it's zoned. So maybe educate me on that portion, because having businesses like the spa is perfect. But they were wanting, the residents wanted to know if there's something else that may come in that's not like the spa because you changed that. So this is an educational moment for me and some of the residents who asked me that question.
Are you referring to the area that they're expanding?
Yes.
I think she's just expanding her business at this time.
Thank you for that. So the residents who asked me that question can hear that, but I, I agree with this. I approve, yes.
Any more discussion? Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm always concerned with people going from a lower intensive commercial to a higher intensive commercial. Because you opened up the door, I mean, she could decide to sell it, or something may happen in her family, she has to sell it, and then you have a used car lot there. Is that prohibited under the overlays or anything like that? Or mechanic shop or something like that? Can we put some conditions in there saying that it needs to stay as a day spa or whatever it is?
Again, the Salem overlay does limit what uses can go in there. I don't believe auto shop is one of the ones that can go there, but there, we do have those limitations in there. And uses in like auto repair and so on, those at a minimum would require a conditional use permit, so they have to come back before the board for something like that.
Well, you don't want a towing company pulling in there and putting a fence up. I mean, would you?
Not in the overlay, no, not in the overlay.
Commissioner Mason, this is your district. What's your concern?
I don't actually have a concern. I'm very well pleased with this particular business. I believe that Mr. and Mrs. Williams have, you know, having the conversation with them, they have made it evident that this is what they want to keep the business as. They want to be a part of this community. They are happy with the customers that are servicing or that they're getting, that they're servicing out of this business. I don't believe, just from having the conversation, when they talked about what she wanted to do with the expansion, this is really going to be an all-around health and wellness facility. And I think with everything that she provides and with her expansion and what she wants to do with that, it's going to be an amazing, amazing opportunity for this area. Now, of course, we know this area is a part of the Salem overlay. Of course, there are conditions. I'm glad that it's in the Salem overlay so that if something does come that, you know, it's going to have to come back before us. For example, if it was an auto shop or something to that effect, it's going to have to come back before us. This is going to be a, a major development node here. We're going to probably begin to see a lot of development in this particular area, especially because of the widening of Salem Road, going all the way down from Smith Store, all the way down to Highway twenty. You're going to begin to see a lot of development in this area. It's in the flume, it's in the future land use map for this area to be developed. And I think this is an amazing, amazing start of what we're going to see, prime businesses in this area. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Any more discussion? Commissioner Cowan?
Can we put a condition in there that stays a similar business like this? That it's not sold and you end up with something that's allowed in a commercial, general commercial zone, but may not be something like this? I mean, I, I could see an opportunist person, if the property is available for sale, buying it, putting a used car lot there, buying it, putting a, I'd say wrecker service or whatever, towing company, whatever. Is there some way to prevent the future? I guess I was asking Patrick this. To prevent the future use?
You could, the board could certainly impose a condition that the zoning is, is subject to, or the only use permitted on this property is a spa and related services. You could certainly do that.
Okay. I'll leave that up to Commissioner Mason, this, this district.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Applewhite, so correcting if I'm wrong, within the overlays, already very, very restrictive in terms of a new, a new business coming in and buying, buying the building itself. It'd be very restrictive in terms of what could go there, right?
Yes, there's, some of the uses are restricted in the overlay. That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm assuming you want to move forward like it is? Call and put a vote. All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Those are all the cases for today.
Thank you for being here tonight. We're going to revert back over to, to finish up with the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We left off with solid waste. As I stated, the number of new tag sales in May was five thousand five hundred and eighty-three. In June, one thousand five hundred and thirty. In July, forty-five eighty. So when you look at that on the average, that's thirty-eight ninety-seven. When you look at the number of replacement tags, thirty-six in May, none in June, two in July. That's about twelve point six. When you look at the number of lost mail tags, that's six in May, zero in June, three in July. So that's about three a month. Number of hardship tags, twenty-five in May, four in June, fifteen in July. That's about fourteen a month. And when you look at the number of unusable tags, forty-five in May, four in June, nine in July. And that's about nineteen point three. So when you look at the totals in May, five thousand five hundred and ninety-five, June, one thousand five hundred and thirty-eight, July, four thousand six hundred and twelve, on average, that's three thousand nine hundred and fifteen. Terms of additional accomplishments from solid waste, staff is completing ongoing maintenance at the convenience centers. The mainland field site received eight hundred on the latest semi-annual inspection by the Environmental Protection Division. And solid waste in collaboration with one of our workforce units, Keep Newton Beautiful, will host a tire amnesty event on September thirtieth at the Cook Road Convenience Center. Transportation. Active projects, Lloyd Road Emergency Culvert Replacement. Projects that are under construction, Yellow River Bridge Replacement at Brown Bridge Road. Kirkland Road at Jack Neely Road Roundabout. Snapping Shoals Creek Bridge Replacement at Brown Bridge Road. Construction to begin this month. Roundabout at Magnet Road and Brown Bridge Road with G-Doc Project. And access road bypass at Crowell Road and I twenty. We have received a notice to proceed issue. Pending Board of Commissioners approvals, Cricket Frog Trail Trestle Bridge Road over Alcove River. Intersection improvements at Harold Dobbs Road and Crowell Road. I mentioned this during the last board meeting, our transportation department had received a four point six million in grants from the Atlanta Regional Commission to cover overage on two bridge projects in Newton County. And then also G-Dot has programmed the replacement of a county-owned bridge located on Henderson Mill Road near Bear Creek. This three million dollar project will make the fifth Newton County-owned bridge G-Dot has programmed for replacement over the last eight years at no cost to the county. Water Resources accomplishments. Our Water Resource Director in Guru, Mr. James Brown, receives the Georgia Water Professionals Elizabeth McIntyre Award at the Georgia Water Professionals Annual Conference in Savannah, Georgia. This award is presented to the member who has excelled in the operation of a public water system. I had opportunity to participate in the water summit with Mr. Brown, and he is definitely a trusted counsel in relationship to his colleagues in the area. After winning our state competition in May, our Water Resource Team participated in the Top Operator Competition with the Association of Water Resources Annual Conference in Toronto, Canada, where they placed fourth overall internationally. So salute to James and his team in that regard. Now, could those employees who take part in the programming that I just mentioned, could you all stand? Thank you for what you do. Now, Mr. Chairman, I was going to wait to the end to talk about the concerns of the seniors, but I, I want to share something briefly right now, and then we can move on in reference to that.
Okay.
To the citizens and the seniors in particular, who came up and expressed their concerns and their agitations, I want to sincerely say I am sorry for the issues that you all have gone through. And just know, when you all shed a tear, I bleed, because you all are our most treasured population. And as a result of the issues, and in particular, the issues that were raised by Commissioner Sanders in an earlier communication today, we're going to have a town hall meeting August ninth. And we're going to send our communications to this board on tomorrow so that you can share with your constituents, the seniors who have raised the concerns, the information of where this town hall will be. We will also reach out to you all directly too, with the information that we have through the senior repair program. And in this meeting, you're going to get clear, consistent communication about the rules and regulations of the senior repair program, so that we could put these issues in our rearview mirror and embark on a journey of success and a road to success. So be on the lookout for that communication, and again, setbacks every now and then, but failure never. Failure's been eradicated from my vocabulary. And you have my commitment in righting the wrongs of the issues that you're experiencing now. I yield back my time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank, thank you. And Mr. Cooper, in our understanding, and I've also had a few calls to myself and my constituents in District Four. And they was, were telling me some, I think one lady from, well, from Hartford. She was telling me that somebody had screamed or whatever, and I think a, a town hall meeting of sort is, is appropriate. But I just want this stuff fixed now. I mean, I don't want, I don't want them to go another day, another minute without us addressing this problem with our senior, if this is a problem. Because I think at the end of the day, if somebody needs something fixed, and if we had went up to thirty thousand dollars, and there should be no reason why we shouldn't be able to fix their home. There should be no reason why the checks that we are writing should be going to the contractors if they are fixing their home the way they should. Myself personally, and I'm speaking for J.C. Henderson, is I don't want to keep waiting to fix these people's homes. I want to do what we need to do for our senior, because they are access to our community. And they are, the reason why we have such a beautiful county, search is Newton, because their labor and their hard works. And then most of them are still paying taxes. And I think that I'm hoping that, don't we have an agenda item on that too as well? Then we, then hopefully we can address that at that particular time. Thank you.
And I concur with you, Commissioner Henderson, and it will be worked on immediately. One of the things that I want to share with this board and share with this community that we have one thousand three hundred and thirteen seniors registered. We have six hundred and thirty-eight applications completed. We have twenty-four approvals. And in reference to the contractors and the issues with issuing checks, we actually had a meeting with twenty-three contractors on yesterday to talk about the program in its entirety, what is expected of them, so on and so forth. So I hear your concerns, and we're going to address it immediately.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders?
Thank you for your report. I have some questions in regards to the assignments that were completed for each district. Is there a list somewhere that's provided to you just to let us know which assignments were completed? Because I'm definitely getting a lot of calls, particularly on the west side of the grass not being cut, the curves. It's just, it hasn't been maintained. And so I would love to see what are those jobs that have been completed. So maybe a list can be sent to us monthly when you do your report. It shows every, I don't know if everybody else wanted, but I would like to see it. That can show what has been- That can show what has been completed in those specific areas because I'm not seeing it on the west, western side, the most dense area that has a lot of traffic. And because that area has so many cars and traffic, you're going to have to put more routine into cleaning it up in that area and, and maintaining it. Because there's so many people going through there, not just Newton County residents. Rockdale residents are coming through that area. So we have a multiple amount of people that are coming. So that means that the maintenance for that side has to increase more than often. So we have to figure that plan out. So I'm, I'm, I would love to see the list of items that have been completed. If we can get that sent to the commissioners, if the, the commissioners may not want to see it, but I would like to see what has been completed. Um, the second one is what are the detour plans, especially for Kirkland and Jack Neely? Once that starts, school just started today. And so that area is already congested. So a lot of the residents are like, what is going to be the detour plans or what plans are put in place once everything starts to start, the construction starts getting in, in effect? So we haven't, I've asked about that before this started because the residents asked me, what's going to happen? Because we already have issues. I have not heard what's going to be the detour plan and what's going to happen with the traffic into that area. Um, the youth commission, we haven't heard a report. I did hear back from some of the students that actually we selected. Um, not all of them because I don't even know who my three are. I've sent, sent four and I've been asking for that email. But, um, what, we don't have, we haven't received a report on that because I was informed that you guys swore them in, in another meeting and not in a public meeting. So I wanted to know, what is the update on the youth commission?
Uh, the update is that we had our orientation. Uh, we had our opportunity to talk with them and their parents and give them the logistics of the program. Uh, we're going to have our next meeting August fourteenth.
Okay. And can you please, uh, send us a list of all who were selected? Because I asked for that like a couple of weeks ago, but I, I never got a notice. You were waiting for the parents to sign at the Monday meeting. So if we can get that list of everyone else selected, that would be great. And that's all my questions.
Thank you. Um, we're going to move right now over to the agenda. Commissioner, I seek a motion, a motion that we are approving, please. The motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Um, Ms. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item on the agenda is items for discussion and consideration. We're at item number ten. Our presenter is Mr. James Brown, Director of our Water Treatment Facility, Cornish Creek, requesting approval of Drinking Water Project's contractual agreement between Newton County, City of Covington, and the Water and Sewerage Authority. The funding source will be ARPA.
Thank you. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
You and your team, thank you all for, thank you for being here tonight. Y'all do a great job.
Good evening, good evening. Well, we're just, uh, asking for approval for the ARPA grant, uh, modification to the already awarded for additional funds to be split between us, the City of Covington, and the Water Sewerage Authority.
Thank you, sir. Seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? The motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Um, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. C. Is this, is, uh, you know, I've been, um, I think somebody, they had, uh, mailed me a, uh, uh, engineering report that was, um, I can't think, because I got it and I was in tentative. Where maybe S. Jack had sent to other commissioners and said they received, received it too. It was engineering report that, um, was sent to City of Covington and to Newton County where they said that if we had a drought of about, if we had a drought, that we might have a water shortage. And said that they estimated in two thousand thirty, that we would have to, uh, we would be at capacity. And I, and I, and I'm, and I was thinking while you were talking, is, is that a part of that report or is that another report?
Uh, that's an old report. We've since, after the, some modifications, improvements we've done to the system. Right now, the current water usage is, will the current water plan that we have now, we have suf- sufficient water to twenty fifty. And we're currently working on the twenty, twenty seventy-five plan with the, with all our partners as well.
Okay, so, so the report that they were sending, that I know they get a copy of from the county that I got, it's an old report and that we're good?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing except congratulations, James, on your award. Tell your group I say congratulations as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you, sir. Think you have another one?
Mr. Chairman, we do have another one by Mr. Brown. This is for number eleven. Cornish Creek is requesting approval of contract with Carter and Sloop for consulting services for Cornish Creek Water Treatment Facility.
This is asking for approval for Carter and Sloop to act as our owner's agent for the upcoming, uh, expansion for the Cornish Creek facility at thirty-nine point five.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. The motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you for being here tonight, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we have items number twelve, thirteen, and fourteen that will be presented by Mr. Chester Clegg. Um, the first one, I'm sorry, Director of Public Works. The first one is going to be Public Works requesting approval of contract with Peach State Construction. The second is Public Works requesting approval to install a speed hump in Chapel Heights subdivision. And the last would be Public Works is requesting approval to contract with Summit Construction and Development LLC to construct an intersection improvements, Crowell Road and Harold Dobbs Road project.
Thank you for being here tonight, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we had a, um, pretty large culvert fail on Lloyd Road out, um, near Mansfield. And it's a, um, it's a pretty urgent emergency to get it repaired. It's about thirty feet deep in a creek and, uh, has, um, a gravity sewer, two water lines and a, a power line. If we have a, have a major storm, it's going to, uh, most likely wash it all out and fail. So we had to go ahead and, um, proceed with a contractor, um, Peach State Construction. I'm bringing that contract, uh, to the board tonight to get, to get approval to continue construction on that project. The total for the project, um, is, is, uh, four ninety-five and fifty-five dollars. It's, uh, four hundred ninety-five thousand dollars.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. It passes five oh.
The second item is, um, a speed hump in Chapel Heights, which is located off Richards Chapel Road. And there's a process that the citizens have to go through to, um, to get a, the, the county to install and maintain a speed hump. And, uh, the citizens in that community jumped through all the hoops and, and got all the signatures. I've included all those. And, um, I have a map showing the location. And, uh, I recommend that the board, um, approve the, uh, speed hump. The reason the board's involved is because, um, each of the residents in the service area have to pay, uh, twelve dollars a year. Uh, I think it comes on their, uh, tax bill.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Um, any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Sanders.
I just have a quick question. How many houses are in the, the subdivision and how many entrances? Is that fifteen? Is that fifteen? Okay.
It's about, about eighteen, nineteen.
Okay, well, that's all. Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you.
The last item is, um, the contract for the intersection improvements at Harold Dobbs Road and Crowell Road. And, uh, we received the bids on, on that project, uh, several weeks ago and, uh, got three bids. Uh, one bid was a, a no bid because forgot to attach the, um, the price sheet. So we had two numbers and the, the low, the lowest bid was two million three hundred ninety-one thousand and fifteen dollars. And that's by Summit Construction. And, uh, we recommend that we award the contract to the low bid, the low bidder.
Thank you, sir. And what did you want to make clarification? When you say there was no bid, they didn't turn in a bid, correct?
They turned in, um,
It was incomplete.
The bid without the numbers.
Yeah.
So we couldn't accept it.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Sanders. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda is item number fifteen, being presented by Mr. Dwayne Mas, Director of Parks and Recreation. They are requesting approval of the rewarding of ARPA funds to paint, rewarding of the ARPA funds to paint the inside of Nelson Heights Community Center. Uh, the contract amount is thirty-two hundred dollars for painting and it is funding source ARPA.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioner. So you have, um, y'all awarded twenty thousand dollars or approved twenty thousand to do flooring at Nelson Heights. So that job is completed and that was fifteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. So we've got a little over four thousand dollars left that we would like to take and, uh, paint the inside of the building at thirty-two hundred dollars.
Thank you, sir. Y'all, I seek a motion? Can I get it? It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Um, Dwayne, how much, how much would it, uh, would it be for somebody to, um, go to the utilities, uh, shed, uh, door back there? Cause, um, well, Ms. Count would tell me that it would not close and, and she wanted to make sure that, that maybe hope somebody fix it. Fix it to, uh, fix that to as well.
Yeah, I would, I just have to see what it is and get a, get a price.
All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is item number sixteen, being presented by Ms. Randy Venture, our Purchasing Coordinator. Uh, Finance and Purchasing requesting approval of the Contract Module Agreement with Bonfire, seven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you.
Hey, hey, everybody. So this is a contract management and it's another module that is part of our bonfire that we already use. And it helps, um, it's going to help, um, sorry. It's going to help track the contracts. It's going to help, um, the departments as well, track their contracts. Keep up with any change orders that may arise. Also keep up with a copy of the contract. If there are any payment bonds, uh, performance bonds, it'll be right there in their back door so that they can look at those. It's just, it's seven hundred and, um, seven thousand five hundred and, seven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you, ma'am. Y'all, I seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Mr. Chairman, the next item we have is item number seventeen, being presented by Ms. Frida Reed, our Senior Services Director. They are requesting approval for annual amendment cost request for Georgia Food Service. Resolution number R- zero eight zero one two zero two three. The resolution approving annual amend contract between Georgia Food Services of Pen- Pinellas County LLC and Newton County. The cost is not to exceed two hundred thousand.
Thank you. Greetings.
Greetings, greetings. Chairman, can I make a statement for?
Go ahead.
Um, I, I hear everyone talking about senior, the needs of seniors. And it is urgent. It is critical that we start thinking about our seniors. Uh, the mills and transportation are good, playing bingo are good, but our seniors need more. And so we need to start putting on our thinking caps to see what we can do for our senior population because we're growing. I'm a senior. I'm seventy years old. So we are growing and, and we have needs and wants. So I, I hope the board in the near future will think about that. Uh, so we won't hear our seniors kind of begging for affection and, and their needs and their wants. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
This contract is something that we do annually. Um, we did receive an eight percent increase from GA Foods. However, we spend about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars with GA Foods for home delivery meals and, and staple meals. Or whoever want, needs a meal, uh, we'll send them a frozen meal or, or, or boxed meal. And we cook on site as well. So we annually spend about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on food alone. Um, so we're just asking that the board will approve this contract so we can, uh, at this point still continue to order from GA Foods because unfortunately, we don't have the staff nor the room to do on-site cooking for everyone. Um, today we ran out of food for our on-site cooking. But that's a good thing because that means our seniors are coming in and they need, need more, uh, they want, they want more food from us and they're enjoying the fellowship and everything. And I thank the, uh, board of commissioners, let me take my glasses off, I'm going dizzy. I thank the board of commissioners for allowing us to be able to do that. But, um, we need this amendment approved if possible so we can, uh, contract with GA Foods. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I seek a motion, please. Can I get a second? It's been motion by, um, Commissioner Mason and second by, uh, Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, uh, the senior services in, in, um, the, uh, recreation on Turner Lake is, is in District Four. I just, just want, just want to say this. I to, I understand that there are needs, you know, and I too am a senior too as well myself. So maybe you need, if you could think about it, is set up a, uh, committee of sort to just bring back to us what, what our seniors need. And, and I'm going to say this and we go ahead and make the vote. Keep on living and I think more people will be seen than just us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we are at the amended item seventeen A, discussion for the senior home repair.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Cooper. Like I stated earlier during my county manager's report, uh, we hear their concerns. And, uh, we're going to address those issues effective immediately. Uh, again, Commissioner, uh, Sanders, thank you for the email, uh, and those sixteen items that you highlighted. And in addition to the concerns that was raised here today, we're going to address all concerns associated with it. And we're going to have a town hall meeting, as I stated earlier, on August ninth. And I'll be giving you all the information in reference to it so that, that we can move forward.
Thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Sanders.
Um, thank you, Mr. County Manager, for informing us of that information. My concern is what are we going to have put in place now because these seniors are going to these facilities to seek help and they're getting the same results. So I know that we have this, uh, town hall on August ninth, but that's like a week or so away. So what about the seniors that are going tomorrow? As you can see, I went to that town hall and we saw evidence. These seniors are probably, if my parents were still living, that would be the age of my parents. And to see them crying for a resource that's supposed to be helping and benefiting them, but it's frustrating them, that tore at my heart. And so that means that something has to be done immediately to change the process. What's happening, what I'm told, and this is given from the people that's participating, is that one directive is given to the volunteers and later on the consultant gives them something and the volunteers are not informed of things that were changed by the consultant. It is so much that is happening that's making these seniors be frustrated. And then they're sitting in a building that's hot. I'm trying to understand why are they in a hot building? I got, I sent, I forwarded text messages over to you guys. It's not coming from Commissioner Sanders, it's coming from the residents. And so a senior sitting in a hot building, I'm trying to understand why they're in a hot building. And so we have to figure out these resources now for them to put them in effect because those sixteen items sitting there listed to all those citizens, I mean residents, excuse me, those residents. And then they're showing me emails that are evident of the behavior. We have to do something now. Uh, and then August ninth, town hall is great, but what is going to be put in place? What is strategic plan? What is the process that's going to be put in place now? No senior should be yelled at. I'm sorry. I would take my commissioner hat off if I see that. No senior should be yelled at.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, Mr. Cooper, you, you saw my email earlier today and, and I know uh, the, the, the phone calls I got do not represent, or can that be? Probably can't be overhauled overnight. So, um, I would encourage you between now and, uh, you're a county manager, so you know, this is rhetorical for me. is rhetorical for me, right? So I would encourage you to assess where we are and, and begin to listen right away to what those issues were. You sure, you've heard a bunch of them, like we have tonight. Start, start to assess those, address those, and then I think, going forward, and speaking from my own experience, is, is communication and consistency in that communication. So I would encourage you to do, continue on the path you are, but, but tomorrow, we have to start devising or coming up with an overhaul, I think.
And, and starting tomorrow would be me going to the sites to physically see, again, what's going on, and where are the issues that are, that are, you know, the hot button issues that we've identified. And again, you know, I understand their concerns, and, and I greatly appreciate their feedback, but at the end of the day, this was uncharted waters for all of us, and it has not been non-successful in its efforts. There's been some growing pains along the way, because again, we're gonna be able to help a lot of families. And it's evident by the number of families we already have registered.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Cooper. So in, in addition, and this is just one commissioner's opinion, although the window may be closed at the moment, we may look at another ti, I would suggest we look at another timeframe to reopen that, that, that window to, to ensure that, that our seniors are, are looked at, and their application looked at more closely. So that's just some of the, some of the, that's just my one person's recommendation and maybe a suggestion, but I just wanted to make that known. And thank you, Mr. Cooper. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I think part of the clarity piece that's important is that if you've started the process, that doesn't mean that you're xed out of the process effective July thirty first. And I think that's where it's been some miscommunication at, and that's where we need to get some clarity at, because again, we have thirteen hundred seniors in the system now. And so, you know, if everything is followed, and if the messaging is clear and concise, and it's simplified, and they understand that, we're gonna be able to help a lot of families. And again, we're, we're looking at the, the money that we have too. And with us going up to thirty thousand, you know, those who initially completed their application, they can go back and assess to see if they had additional, you know, repairs needed based on the criteria. But what I'm hearing tonight is, a lot of people don't truly understand the criteria piece of it, and I have a communication already in place, and then that I may just go to the different sites and post myself, that clearly states those qualifications, what's eligible, what's ineligible.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson.
Well, thank you. We, and I, I agree to County Manager, Ms. Cooper, but I think we need to open, we need to open it back up, and we need to continue the program until all the money is gone. We need to address those issues that they do have. And, and I tell you, at the end of the day, I would like for the, the consultants, I mean, we know they're gonna make some money, but they're making easy money doing less work, and, and yet the, the seniors are suffering, because there's a lot of need. I mean, I've walked around during election time, and I continue to walk, that's what I do. And there's a lot of need in town, people own their houses, who really need it, for them to be fixed. And the last thing you wanna hear is somebody screaming and hollering at you, and you're standing in a building that's hot, because it's miserable. Or you get a contractor, and then the contractor don't wanna do any work, like, say, well, I wanna get my money. When I, when I turn in the pictures and show what I've done, I wanna get my money. He should be able to get his money to as well. And one last thing, what do you do about the folks, the seniors, who can't leave their homes, the ones who are impaired, can't see, unable to get out? I mean, are we dragging them to some kind of meeting that, that we're having for them to come out and, and somewhat, almost to a certain degree, to plead with the board or whomever about fixing their, we don't want that. What we wanna do is, is to fix the old people's homes, this is one commissioner, fix their homes, spend the money that we appropriated for. And, and if there's a, and put a limit on how much money that the contractors who don't live around here from out of town are getting, you know? And I think, and maybe you can help me, I think it's close to a million dollars that Ms. Kennedy is, have already received, or maybe somewhere around that. And I just thought what additional a million dollars could do for us repairing and fixing our senior homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Point taken, Commissioner Henderson, and the senior who can't make it out of their homes, we've actually done, I know for certain, one home visit, and in reference to this town hall meeting, not only will it be a town hall meeting, we're gonna record it, and we're gonna disseminate it on our five platforms as well. So we're gonna try to cover all the bases, and I hear your concern. Thank you again.
Yes, sir. Just one last thing, Mr. Chairman, to call me, seven seven oh eight nine six three eight two six, and I'll help.
Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing we can do tonight, we can extend that deadline. That's a bit of a concern for many people. So I would like to make a motion to extend the deadline till, for another thirty days or whatever, whatever you think, Harold, is a reasonable time. I think thirty days is a good start, so I'll make a motion on that.
So Commissioner Cowan, are you making a motion that we amend the agenda to add that to the agenda?
Well, we're talking about senior home improvement, right?
We are, but are you making a motion that we add that to the agenda to?
Does it need, Patrick?
You'll need a motion, the, the, the agenda was amended.
Thirteen hundred in the system registered right now.
Okay, so, all right, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to consider extending the deadline for thirty days.
Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Cowan that we amend the agenda tonight to add the extension of the senior home improvement for thirty days. It's been seconded by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Commissioner Sand, Commissioner Sanders.
Yes, sir. I, I had a couple of questions before we did the motion, but thank you to my colleague for doing that. But my question is gonna be, is how are we gonna handle those residents who have disabilities? And I know our consultant came up here and stated cosmetic, but we have to find what is cosmetic. Because if a cabinet is falling down on a resident, on a senior, and we're not gonna replace it, and you tell them the senior, they only can replace the doorknobs, we gotta figure that thing out. We gotta get some detailed information from Department of Treasury, because I, I truly believe that some of this cosmetic is, is not right. So we have to definitely find out that situation. But thank you again, Commissioner Cowan, for making that motion.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is, I guess is a question for Mr. Cooper. Are we, out of the thirteen hundred applications that we already have in the system, are we, even from the past ones that we have approved, are they all getting approved for the total amount of thirty thousand?
Yes, now, I mean, up to thirty thousand, but I don't have the exact number as to what their repair totals are currently in front of me. But what's key to this whole piece is that we have six hundred and thirty-eight applications completed right now, and then we have an additional one thousand, three hundred and thirteen registered that have started the process. So again, you know, I know we went up to thirty thousand, but we gotta be mindful of that.
And, and I guess the reason why I ask that question, because I'm just looking at the math. So if I just look at the thirteen hundred that we have, if they all got thirty thousand, that's thirty-nine million dollars. And we don't have thirty-nine million dollars set aside for this program. We only have, what, was it an additional, was it a two million? We added another million, so we have two million dollars for the program? Or did we add more?
I think it was, I think it was a total of four million.
Total of four million.
Yeah.
So we have a total of four million dollars for this program, so if every single person that came through and they all qualified for thirty thousand dollars, we don't have enough to do that. So that's why I'm asking, is everybody that submits an application that qualify, are they actually getting the full amount? Because just with the thirteen hundred, not including the six hundred plus that's already in the system, that's thirty-nine million dollars right there. So I'm just wanting to put that out there, to be mindful of, yes, up to thirty thousand, but if we are, if every person is coming out with thirty thousand, we, we're gonna run out quickly, and we won't be able to even really extend the program, because we're gonna run out of funds. So I'm open to extending the program, I guess we just have to be mindful of what we are approving up to, so that we don't run out of funds so quickly. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna make a couple comments also. Guys, we have helped the youth, they didn't get, we didn't get the turnout that we're getting with the seniors. Nonprofits, we didn't get the turnout that we're getting with the seniors. This is by far the biggest turnout that we have had. There's gonna be issues that come up, we, we gotta deal with. But I would like this board to consider adding the remainder of our ARPA funds to the senior home improvement. I think we have, I think this, it's close, but we can get the number from Brittany. And I think, I think she said, it's something like that, but whatever it is, I think we heard the numbers that Mr. Cooper gave us tonight, it's a large number that is sitting in a portal right now, and a lot of them won't be able to get help. So I would love for this board to consider adding the remainder of those funds to the senior home improvement. I mean, everybody's saying, let's help the seniors, so let's help them, let's get the rest of the funds to them. Yeah. I, that's fine, but I'm, let me get Commissioner Sanders, I'm just making my comments as well, but it's Commissioner Sanders' turn now.
Just, just to add, some of the applicants, I know we had this amount of applicants that submitted, but some of them were closed out, and a lot of these seniors didn't know their application was closed out, that's why they came up here. So we might have had that amount that submitted, but all of them were not approved. And so you also had some residents who said that their stuff was lost in the cloud. Do we know what cloud it went to? I would love to know what cloud this is on, because that's their personal information, their social security numbers that went somewhere that we don't know where it went. So that's another thing. And I agree with Chairman about adding that money, but my only concern is, is the consultant gonna come back and ask for more money. So that's gonna be my concern.
No, because it's, it's part, it's part of the current program, that's what I'm saying.
But we're extending, so is it, they'll be adding more time, and, and remember, she, she invoices us.
Yeah, so I think it depends on whether she's already managing these funds or not.
She's managing the funds.
If these are unallocated funds, then it would, there would be an increase.
Yeah, because she bases it on a percentage of money. Remember last time we added on that thirty thousand, and she came back and asked for additional based on a percentage? So if we adding on that two point nine, she's gonna come back and ask for a percentage of the amount of the grant, so she's gonna ask for more money.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't let that stop us from giving the remainder of the other funds, because, I mean, y'all see it, just like I'm seeing it sitting here. These seniors are coming up, and I'm not gonna call the young lady name, but she's really crying up here, and it's kinda like Ms. Frida said a while ago. Yeah, I do care, say what you wanna say. I care. And I'm talking to you.
Mr. Chairman, pour the water.
So, so this is, this is the thing, they coming up here, they crying, and they asking for help. So we got the funds there, give it to them.
So if, I, I wanna give these funds, you know, I would wanna give these funds. So as Patrick has mentioned, if she does come back and ask for more money, is that gonna come out the general budget?
So the thing is, if she, if we, okay, we have, whatever, roughly two million dollars left for whatever it is, if she come back and we put that money somewhere else, she gonna get paid for that. So why not just pay her to do the senior citizen thing?
So, so my, so my question is being answered. She may come back and ask for more money.
But if we put the money somewhere else.
That's what she will.
If she put the money somewhere, if we, this board allocate the funds somewhere else, she's gonna get paid.
I don't think my, my question has been answered, or maybe, maybe I miscommunicated wrong, but if we're putting the whole two point nine in, maybe we need to put two and leave, leave the remainder, because she's gonna come in and ask for more funding.
Of course, that's, that's finance, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course. But the remainder of the funds that can be allocated, and I think there's something, Commissioner Henderson and Commissioner Mason asked for at the last board meeting. I'm just, I'm in agreement with them, let's, let's give it to them. So it would be great if somebody would make that in the form of a motion tonight. Aron, okay, we need, we need to vote on your motion first. Let us vote on your motion. You wanna amend it? Okay, thank you, sir.
I'm just talking about extending the application period, not all the, whole program and everything. People are getting turned away because they said the application deadline is over, can't apply. Well, I think that part needs to be extended. The whole program, we ain't got to that yet, and you're gonna have to get Ms. Kennedy up here to talk to her about that. So I wanna make sure that's clear. What my motion was, is for the application process itself.
Okay. And, so let's do this, let's get this, let's, let's do this, let's, let's, let's vote on the application process, and then we'll go from there. All in favor? So we only voting on Ronny's motion, we're not adding anything to Ronny's motion.
Just to add it to the agenda, right?
Extend the application.
Yeah.
And I just need, I just need clarity on that motion I was asking. That's for applications that have already been submitted, and for those who wanna come, because people are getting turned around who wanna come back and amend their application. So that's everybody, we just wanna make sure that's clear.
Okay. Okay. So let's take a step back.
I, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna make one comment. When you have thirteen hundred registered, they're not all the way complete with the applications, right? So they're kinda like in the queue. So when you do the math at thirty thousand, let's just say everybody top out at the thirty thousand, and let's say six hundred and twenty of those people with the twenty-four approvals we already have in place, qualify, I think that's like nineteen million dollars. So I want us to be mindful of the money that we have left, and there's still gonna be some disappointment, because we're going to run out of money. I mean, everybody's not going to probably be processed.
So I think what he's saying is, extending the application period doesn't help anybody, because there's already more people in the queue that can possibly recover, get money, because it's not enough money for thirteen hundred people.
Well, you may need to consider capping the amount, instead of it thirty thousand, you cap it at seven.
Mr. Chairman, just, do you mind? Okay.
Look, look, let's do this. Let's vote on adding to the agenda, and then y'all can discuss it however y'all wanna discuss it, okay? The motion was made to add it to the agenda, we are amending the agenda, all in favor? To amend the agenda? To add this to the agenda? Yeah? Any opposed? Okay, it passed four one. It's on the agenda, it's item seventeen, let's do it correctly, it's item seventeen B. Now it's up for discussion. Anybody wanna talk about it?
The question.
Commissioner Sanders.
The question that I have is, I wanna make sure, cause there's a lot of seniors who applications are in the system and receiving emails to do additional things, and they're coming in to do those additional things and being turned away. So that's why I asked the question, based on that motion, if we're extending it, it's also for the people who have application in place, because they've been told that if they already have an application in, in the system, after they've been sitting there for two hours, as we heard, they've been turned away.
So if that happened on July thirty first, that was an administrative oversight, not good judgment use, but what I think the designees were trying to do was get the but what I think the designees were trying to do was get the new applicants in since the deadline was July thirty first. And maybe they didn't articulate that to the seniors that, hey, your application is good, but still nonetheless you should have never turned them away, right? They should have been serviced as well. So anybody that has an application in queue and if they were told that their application, they can't find their application, so on and so forth, we need the names of those individuals because their application will be processed. And that's part of my answers to, you know, your response, I mean, to your email that you sent earlier.
And, and my last question is, what is, I know we purchased some laptops for this program, am I correct? Do I remember that? I remember we purchased some laptops. So the seniors are being told that when they go there, they have to have their own devices. It's not being reiterated to them. So we need to, these processes that are put in place, they've been told one thing and some of these seniors don't have iPads or various devices, they don't know how to upload photos. The other issue has to be, is we are asking these seniors at the last minute who already submit their applications that were being sent emails that they need to come back and submit photos. That's hard for a senior to take a photo of a roof, some who don't have anybody to take photos, so we have to figure out this process.
Well, one of the new messages is that they're not responsible for the photos at all and the contractors are. And they're gonna get that information out.
Okay.
Okay, and, and, and it's gonna be streamlined.
Okay.
Say that again, I'm sorry, say that again.
They're not gonna, if they can't take the pictures themselves because of, you know, you know, their, whatever, then, you know, we've told the contractors, we told them that yesterday in our meeting, that we want them to take the pictures.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, um, I, I think what Mr. Cooper just described is, 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 is part of our problem. We, we, we were still communicating those type, those type messages on the last day. So it, it just demonstrates the confusion that existed throughout the process. Some of that's probably our fault because we made some changes, I believe, the last meeting. So we'll have to take responsibility for that. Now, I know I said earlier I was in favor of extending this. But some of the math statements make sense. We've got enough in the pipeline right now, if they get thirty thousand dollars, they don't, they're not gonna, if they qualify, they're not gonna get thirty thousand dollars. So, and, and, and what, what makes our issues of yesterday and the two previous weeks go away overnight if we extend the period tomorrow? My, I'm not, I'm not opposed to, to extending the period. What I, what I am suggesting is that we pause this process until we get some issues ironed out by the county manager and his staff over the coming days and through the, the process of the town hall next week. And make sure that we've addressed everything before we take on more applicants. Because the, the ones in the pipeline right now, if they qualify, will not get thirty thousand dollars. And my mother's in that pipeline, so I hope, but, um, I don't know for sure, but, you know, uh, that's kinda where we are. I would suggest we pause this, this program until we get, we've, we've got applicants, thirteen hundred and something in the process right now. We don't start working on those, but we start looking at the problems before we extend the, the, the whole, the application process again. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Anyone else?
So.
Commissioner Sanders.
So is it concrete that these applicants are active applications? Because what I was informed that some of them have been closed. We're not communicating with the residents to tell them when their application is closed and the status of when they apply, where they are. So there is no process, no standard operating procedure put in place that tells them, okay, now you submitted your application, we have received it, we need this, that, and you're at this status. Or we closed your application. A lot of these seniors have no idea that their applications are closed. And they're going up there to check on it, so we might have had thirteen applications, but they're all not active.
Well, to date, there's been twenty-six denied, so seniors are receiving notice. There may be some that have not received their notices. But again, I'd much rather us address that now and deal with the issue now instead of putting the cart before the horse, because I don't wanna compliment, complicate things more. So that's why we're gonna do a triage effective tomorrow, and that's gonna carry over to the town hall.
Well, I, I would say this, this, this board has the authority to, at the next board meeting, if, 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 if it's a pleasure to extend it, if that's what you guys wanna do once. No, once, yeah, once you give the county manager opportunity to have a town hall and talk with, with the seniors and, and change some of the, the operations of it. This board had opportunity to come back and extend it, uh, the thirty days they would like.
Is there a substitute or a new motion to pause it? I think that's what I'm hearing, a new motion to pause the application process, then the county manager.
Yeah, put it on the floor.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I would like some clarity from legal for, on one issue, on a substitute motion. Could I ask a legal question?
Yes.
So, uh, if I made a motion to pause this, the, the application process to new applicants for two, a period of fourteen days, thirty days, I mean, what, what do we?
About to the next board meeting.
Okay.
Which would be fourteen days from today, right?
Right, okay. All right, I'll, I'll make that substitute motion.
Well, when we get to, when we get to our thirteen hundred applications, because that's what's gonna matter.
Well, you'll find out between now and then. I mean, I think Harold's, I think you're gonna need to give the manager the opportunity to give you a comprehensive report about how many people are in the pipeline because there's already thirteen hundred people at some level of the pipeline. So, and, and may, you may wanna, you may want a declaration that if someone applied, if they submitted an application, even if it's incomplete, that application is deemed filed. I think that's an appropriate way to fix the current problem.
Are you making that in the form of a substitute motion or what, what are we doing?
I'll make the form of a substitute motion that we pause the new applicant process for a period of fourteen days until our next commissioner meeting, until we can get a status readout from Mr. Cooper.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards, substitute motion made, and second by Commissioner Mason, that we pause this for, until our next board meeting, until we can hear back from our county manager. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders.
At, at the next board meeting, county manager, will you be bringing us a structured policy of how everything's gonna be operated, the standard procedure?
Sure.
Okay.
All in favor? Thank you, it passed five oh.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have is the alcohol beverage license, item number twenty. Final reading for District One, Fox Vineyard, Inc., two twenty-five Highway eleven South, Social Circle, Georgia, three zero zero two five. The applicant is Mr. Kenneth R. Fugus.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Mason, any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh.
Mr. Chair, item number twenty-one, final reading for District Two, Venture Management, one four six five six Brownbridge Road, Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one six. Applicant Youssef Alamedan.
Motion to approve.
Second. It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards, any discussion? All in favor?
Mr. Chair, item number twenty-two, final reading for District Two, TMN Enterprises, World of Wings, fifty-three fifty Highway twenty South, Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one six. Applicant, Mr. Christopher Thomas.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Mason, all, and can I get a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Edwards, any discussion? All in favor? Passes five oh. Thank you. Next is citizen comments, just an opportunity that we allow citizens to come up and make comments. You have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Joe Lightfoot and I live in Covington, Newton County. And I don't have, what I have is a question uh, about the, uh, the home improvement, you know, plan. At first, it was fifteen thousand and then you voted to raise it to thirty, right? Am I correct about that?
Thirty thousand.
That was, uh, to use, that was thirty thousand to be used up to thirty thousand, I thought. Not, not automatic thirty thousand. Okay. So now we, you're talking about extending the program another thirty days. Okay. At the end of this month, last month, you extended thirty days. So that would be the end of this month, right? Wait, I, I received, wait a minute, I received a letter
Yeah.
that said, that says we had until the end of, you know, it was extended thirty days, you know. So the program would be ended on August thirty first. So if you're gonna extend it again, wouldn't that be another thirty days past August? I, I'm just asking a question.
So, so, can you pause it? So the way it works, you can make statements and after, after you make your statements, somebody will come down and talk to you afterwards.
Mm-hmm, okay, I just, you know.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Come back again. I think, uh, the question Joe raised, he misunderstood. It was if you have your application in, if you have your application in, if you don't have all your stuff, if you don't have all your bids and things, that would be extended, Joe, to thirty, uh, August the thirty first. But you cannot come back now, you cannot come back now, they didn't extend it to thirty days for you to come back and do your application. That's my understanding. And, uh, hopefully the citizens understand that because, uh, lots of people are confused about that. So Joe, if you got your application in now and you go out and get some more bids, you can submit it. But you can't come back now and go and, go and, uh, put an application in. So, uh, that's, 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 uh, wrong, what you're saying is wrong. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, anyone else?
Stephanie Lindsay, seventy-five Longview Drive, Oxford, Georgia. I just wanna say, one of the things that I think that may be helpful is that we develop community partners because my law firm has volunteered time to help seniors and we have been able to get applications in with no problem at all. But we have had, like yesterday was a pretty bad day. We worked on one person for four hours and it was because she was lost in the system. She couldn't find her information and so we had to start over and then she didn't have the right stuff. But one thing that has helped us through the process is that we created, based upon the last meeting, the eligible and ineligible repairs that have been published. And we told them to provide that to their contractors, so the contractors will know when they come out to do bids, what was good and what was not good, and that has been very helpful. So maybe develop community partners with other individuals that are willing to volunteer and help because we do pay attention to what the rules are and everybody's been right. I mean, it's been very confusing. I had one lady that didn't have the house in her name and somebody told her that she could still do it because she had letters of administration. It was two thousand and sixteen letters of administration, but she never changed the deed over. So we had an attorney volunteer to go ahead and do the deed, so now as of today, the deed is in her name. So there, those things can, can be helpful to the seniors because the bottom line is they need help. This particular season, senior that we worked on for four hours yesterday, she had no air conditioning, ever. In this heat, she's been working with fans and she's disabled. So while it was very frustrating, and I think I did elevate my voice one time during the conversation because it was frustrating, I had to apologize to her because she didn't know any better. So if we can focus on getting some more partners, that would be very helpful. And I think with what you're doing in the community now, with everybody really paying attention to the three Ps, you shouldn't have a difficult time getting individuals that are willing to volunteer their time to help. I mean, I'm not saying do a hundred, because I think, I think we've done five, maybe six, and we got four that we're working on now, but that would be helpful.
Anyone else? Commissioner Cowan. Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna take the opportunity to thank everybody that came out on last Friday for our back-to-school movie in the park at Diddy Dallas Park. We had an amazing time. We gave away a lot of book bags, school supplies. Uh, we had a great time, the kids had a great time. Uh, and so I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out and look forward to doing that again on next year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sanders.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. The commissioners, well, a couple of us actually went to the National Association of Counties Convention last week and is very insightful on some of the policies that are gonna be put in place and some of the things that our counties need to be focused on. And one of the things I actually just posted on social media was the tiny home community. And we have a issue here in Newton County that's, that we have to tackle, that one person or two individuals cannot be able to do all the work. We have a homeless situation. Um, I noticed it, I didn't notice it, but with the, with the residence that's being built next to the enclave, when they actually cut down those woods and to see the homeless, our unsheltered population still sitting there, still there in the heat, in the woods, that's no longer there. That lets us know, although that part is considered rock, it's on the Rockdale and the Newton County borderline. And so we have a lot of, of, of our unsheltered in the woods. I've actually sat down and talked to some of them in front of the, the Dollar General and they've told me their issues, we have to tackle this issue. I don't, I don't know board if we're gonna get together and maybe do a workshop on how we're gonna handle our un, under, unsheltered population because there are a lot of counties, especially here in, in the Georgia, who have built tiny home subdivisions. I know it's, it's a process, but we need to speak to the ones who've done it. Don't work hard, work smart. Let's get the information from them. I'm also honored to be also, I was voted on, I was appointed as the National Secretary for the Women of NACO. I'm doing that opportunity as well. I'm also the chair of NACO's Next Generation Network. I am also the vice chair of the Program Services Standing Committee and also the subcommittee vice chair for the Human Services Education Committee. So I'm honored to do that and also to represent Newton County on the federal level.
Commissioner Henderson.
I, I'll just make it brief. A few, a day or two ago, I was invited by some friends to the appointment and she had told me her son had been killed and his whole family. So my wife and I went over and, and it wants to be a part of a balloon letting go and remember his son, which they still have to the best of my knowledge, it's the date of his funeral. And as I thought about him, DJ, I thought about the times he came over my house, the time that we had talked to him, the times that I was trying to mentor him to the best of my ability and then he moved to the appointment. I said all that to say this, you don't have to do nothing trying to help the kids. You don't have to get worried about no gains that they may be getting in or the gains they creating. But it may be, it may be more soon than later, that the gains come more in, not only in your community, which they already there, but they're gonna be maybe close to your home than you think they are. but they're gonna be maybe close to your home than you think they are now. So, either we as a, we as a community, we need to work together, try to do something to help the kids, give them something to do. And think about those, those reading skills, because I think most of the kids who are being kinda pulled into the game and stuff don't have the reading skills, and they may not even, um, have the math skill that they need. And we're doing nothing. And, uh, we're gonna see more people dying, more kids dying in our community until we just come together as we used to be. And it takes a whole village to raise a child.
Thank you, sir. Um, guys, I wanna take an opportunity to invite all of you out to our family, um, Family Fun Day, uh, which will be Saturday, um, at eleven o'clock. Uh, we're looking, I was fifth, yeah, Saturday, what did I say? Oh, I was fifth, I'm, I'm sorry. Um, it starts at eleven o'clock, end at two. Um, last time we had it before COVID, I think we had about four thousand people to attend. Uh, we looking for that same crowd to come back. Um, be a ton of giveaways there. Um, so if you don't have anything to do, please come on out and celebrate with us, uh, here in Newton County. There is a need for executive session tonight, um, potential.
For real estate.
For real estate. Thank you, sir. Um, and I seek a motion that we move into executive session tonight.
So, move.
Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. All in favor? Any opposed? Guys, there may, hey, um, we are in executive session, but we may come back out and take a vote tonight.